So I'm getting the whole, I'm gonna get up here right in here.
Get a padded chair here.
Yeah.
Okay, our next presentation.
And all of you have your packets, okay? What you'll find on the right-hand side of your packet, first of all, is the actual code for the school calendar, followed by the guidance document that we provided by the State Department of Education in terms of what the calendar is to look like. And then the third document you will see is the one that we'll start with, and that's the one that outlines the changes that were a result of the legislative session that took place in 2013, which made substantial changes to the school calendar. So substantial, in fact, that there wasn't enough time to turn it around in order for us to prepare the calendar this year, this current thirteen, fourteen-year calendar, around the changes that was made to the regulations, to the statute. So there was another bill actually passed by the legislature that put this off for a year so that everyone would have some time to kind of wrap their heads around all the changes. So instead of me going through the code, what I'd like to do is just kind of brief you on what those major changes are. And the one, of course, that we'll start with originally here tonight is the fact that we're now required to have two public hearings to gain input from the public in terms of what the calendar would look like. Also a change for the first time is that school boards, school systems are now required to provide 180 days of instruction. I mean, you all know what this winter's been like. We've now missed 25 days of instruction this year. There's only enough room in there to make up nine of those days that's built into the calendar, so you know, you're looking at 16 days that we're not going to be able to make up this year. And there's no provision in the current code that would enable us to do so. But beginning with next year's 2014-15 calendar, we are required to have a full 180 days of instruction. Also, what happened with this changes in the statutes was the length of the instructional term. In years past, you had 43 weeks to get your 200 days of employment. Well, that window's now been extended to 48 weeks. And when you see these sample calendars here in a moment, you'll see that those weeks show up in terms of out-of-calender days. We have to show every possible day that we could make up for missed instruction during the school year. So that would include Christmas break, that would include, uh, spring break, and also all the days in the month of June up through June the 30th are all potential days. And we'll get into that in a little more detail here in a few minutes. All instructional time, which that includes two-hour delays or early outs, we have to ensure that we're making enough time during the school day that we can account for those times when that happens, or we're happy to take place. And also a requirement about the out-of-cal- or the OS days, that those all, for those days have to be after the 130th day of instruction. So, you know, in the past, what we've done, and this action will have to become part of the board's policy, and that's something we'll get into in a little more detail in a moment, too, is that we have, we'll have to decide how we're going to use those days to make up for the missed instruction. What we usually do is we say, okay, there's six OS days in the calendar. The first six days that we miss, those OS days become instructional days. And then we have some teacher prep days in there, we've got a continuing ed day in the calendar. Those all become potential days for us to make up for this school. And the board has, through this policy that we've developed, you have the ability, the option, to either use one of those non-instructional days, like I've just described, or you can use out-of-calender days. You've got a lot of flexibility there in terms of what that looks like. The other change that's not listed here is the faculty senate days are now gone out of calendar. You know, it used to be there were five faculty senate days, and those counted as instructional days, and then other students weren't there at school. So now that's been removed. Faculty synods are still provided time or opportunity to meet for two hours, five times during the year, but it's no longer going to be a full day devoted to that activity. Through this process, the calendar itself, the guidelines weren't finalized until January this year. And Mrs. Lucas and I attended a meeting in Charleston where the State Department conducted a session on what these guidelines would look like, some sample calendars that we could consider, and they also gave us an opportunity to meet as reses and kind of sit down and talk about what the process would look like. So for us, what we've done, Mrs. Lucas and I came back. I assembled a calendar committee, and Mrs. Clayton is with me here this evening. I asked her to come because she plays an integral role on that school calendar committee. She's the only person I know that loves building a school calendar more than I do.
You gotta promise me when I retire that I can still build a school calendar.
Yeah, she does a great job. So we brought that committee together, there's principals and directors and teachers that serve on that committee. I walked them through all the changes, through what you're seeing right here this evening. And we set out to develop some calendars that we could give to our employees to vote upon, because part of this process is that our employees get an opportunity to look at those calendars that we produced and to choose the one which is their preference, which I'm going to pull those up right now. I'll pull up the first one that he developed. And we called this one Calendar A. Calendar A was a calendar that had the earliest start date. This calendar would bring employees back on August the 7th. So we saw the two continuing ed days and a teacher prep day. And on that prep day, you're required by code to give your faculty the two hours that they have to have or need in order to have their first faculty senate meeting. Now, after that first faculty senate meeting, every 45 days, at least once every 45 days, you have to provide an opportunity for the faculty senate to meet. So we have another faculty senate day here on the 14th of October. Again, on the 23rd of December, right before Christmas break. And then we had faculty senate scheduled March the 11th, and the last one made on the 27th. Now, those are coded there, but that's just for our purpose, for you all to see them. When we submit our final calendar to the State Department, I will pull that out of there, because they're gonna want, if I scroll down a little lower, then you can see the dates on the bottom of the calendar, and you have a copy on the left-hand side of your folder that I gave you, where you can see the dates of the faculty senate meetings are listed on the bottom.
These are all non-instructional days, correct?
Yes. Those faculty senate days are actually going to be instructional days.
Oh, they are?
And what we will do is those will be early outs, two-hour early outs for faculties to meet on those days. And I'll just go ahead and discuss it now, because this, accruing this banked time is so important for making up lost instruction that as I, and the calendar committee, as we ran or went through these guidelines and this code, our one-hour delays on Wednesday is something that we're gonna have to move away from. In order to make sure that, ensure that we have enough time for these situations that come up when we have high water or the power's off in a certain area, that, you know, those types of, you know, situations that we encounter that we can make up that time.
Do you have to have banked time before you have a faculty senate meeting?
Yes. And we're only as strong as our school that has the least amount of banked time. Now, at the high school, we're banking tons of time. I mean, they're getting in an hour or more than what they're required in terms of instructional minutes every day. The one that is the least amount is Ranger Elementary, and it looks like they're gonna be around 20 or 25 minutes. But if that's the case, then we're gonna be fine, especially when we have county-wide early outs or two-hour delays because of inclement weather.
Why is there a shortfall at Ranger because of transportation issues?
Exactly. They've got the shortest day of any school in the county. And everything, transportation-wise, ties into the high school. So that high school really drives that schedule for the other schools out there.
Yeah, and what confused me, I think, was this pane down here where it says the portion of non-instructional days given the fact that it's considered as part of the purpose, non-instructional days, that's why I was, well, I said it, because I was, to me, that said it was that the faculty senate days were a non-instructional day.
It is kind of weird, but what it is, is those faculty senate days are instructional days, and those two hours that we set aside, now that's non-instructional time.
Right.
So that's where we have to make sure that we're banking enough time to cover those activities.
That's just my misunderstanding of this.
And we really do, we feel, we feel good when we look at how much time we're banking, that we're gonna be okay.
A lot of that's dependent on the number of, excuse, the number of two-hour delays and all these kind of things, right?
Right.
I mean.
And every, well, Trish and I was in our meeting in Charleston, you know, we were told, you know, the State Department's not gonna be the bank time police. They're not, they're not gonna be actually boots-on-the-ground, check and make sure that we're keeping up with what we're supposed to do in documenting how much accrued instructional time we have. So it's kind of on the honor system, basically.
OEP would do that.
That's what I said.
Yeah, I'm not that naive.
Yeah, but that was the message, that was the letter.
And we have it documented.
We already have a system for tracking accrued instructional time, and we've had some conversations at principal meetings about the importance of being able even to break that out into more detail, so in case we would be visited or audited, that we're gonna have our documentation showing that we are accruing the time that we need for these activities, anything else that would arise. So we'll.
So no matter which calendar is selected, and I think it's gonna be C is gonna be the calendar that people like, right?
Sure.
Someone's gonna do that. All of these calendars provide for us having more than enough educational minutes, assuming a, assuming normal days off, normal missed days due to weather, et cetera.
Correct.
What happens when we have a really mild year and everything works well, AP gets all the lines cut, there are no gas main problems, and come middle of May, or the third week in May, we're ahead on minutes? How do you handle that? You just?
You're just ahead on minutes.
You just roll through, and your kids get an extra two weeks of education that year?
That's right.
No problem with that.
We like it.
Jeff, I think it's important that we point out that one of the big changes is if, at Duval, for example, the water gets up and they have to send us home. If we don't have that time, we would have to make that up at Duval, or if we were out for a day because of high water. You cannot use accrued time to make up a full day. Duval would have to, you know, be in session on a day the rest of the county is not in session.
So even if you have the minutes to cover a lost day, you have to have another day of instructional time?
Well, and as a part of this, we still don't, we're still waiting for some guidance from the State Department and how we're gonna handle this. And that's gonna be part of the policy that the board will develop. And once we get this information, you know, we'll get it in their hands as quickly as we can, so that you will have time to look at it and ask quite many questions that you would have.
Because what Kim brought up, and what you're saying, too, is this instance, it sounds like we're gonna be employing people for another day?
It's possible.
Or some of our people.
Particularly bus officers and cooks possibly, just depending on how big it would matter.
Not necessarily the teachers and the service personnel at that school, because a parent day could use another day.
I mean, if you look at this calendar, for example, you talked about opportunities to make up for missed instruction. You know, if you come down here to January the, what is that, the 16th, we've got a teacher-parent day in here, an opportunity for teachers to meet with parents, because the, on this calendar, the first semester would end on December the 23rd. We would've had 90 days of instruction to occur right there. Well, if we happen to miss a day somewhere, like we did this year, I think December the 10th, we had a snow day, we could actually go ahead and make up that day on that teacher-parent day scheduled here on the 16th. That'd be our first opportunity, I mean, if we wanted to. Now, what we've done in the past, and this will become part of our policy, instead of looking at that day, what we've done is we've always said, well, the first six days that we missed for inclement weather, we'll let those become these outside school environment days, these OS days. So just like with this year's calendar, all six of these days, you see here in purple, are days that we can use to make up the lost instruction. This TP day is a day that we can use to make up the lost instruction, as well as this P day, preparation day, right here on the 28th of June, is an opportunity to make up the lost instruction.
And CE, that's correct.
Oh, and the CE day, yeah.
Are there 10 there, Jeff?
I believe there's nine days now, is what we have.
I mean, in this, these calendars, are there 10 days?
Yeah, there's, the ones here that we've got in purple, so there's six of those, this, I'm not sure what you call that, what you call that, the one of the teacher-parent
Teacher-parent.
Day, that makes seven. The CE day makes eight, and this P day right here makes nine. So with next year's calendar, no matter which one we would approve, there are nine days feeling to make up for this instruction.
Jeff, can I suggest that we go and look at B and then kind of concentrate on C, because you can share the results with us.
Very quickly, Calendar B would bring employees back on August the 11th. It would have a full week for spring break, a week and a half for Christmas break. A full week for spring break. Students' last day being June, June the 2nd, and teachers' last day, or employees' last day being June the 3rd.
As long as you don't have those OS days or snow days.
And now, is it A where it infringes upon Thanksgiving break?
Yes, it's shorter than Thanksgiving break.
That's the only difference. I understand that.
And with this calendar, too, we're also, you would also end your first semester on December the 23rd, so you would end the semester before Christmas break.
On A ending?
On A ending. And graduation on Calendar B, I don't think we talked about that on Calendar A, but it should be written down there somewhere at the bottom. On Calendar B, as this, as this calendar stands, graduation would have to be on May the 29th through 30th, as we talked about and learned earlier this year. You can't have graduation with no more than five days remaining, five instructional days remaining in the school. So with this calendar, graduation would either have to be on Friday, May the 29th, or Saturday, May the 30th, as your options.
And Memorial Day next year, is it gonna be that, so one of them would be on the opposite or a different weekend, but?
Right. So Memorial Day weekend is the weekend of the 23rd, 24th, and 25th next year. And I'll go ahead and jump to Calendar C. In the, in your packet, you'll see how the voting, how that worked out. We sent these calendars out several weeks ago for our employees to vote on. And I'm working for my company. And, and I'll, well, actually, I've got that for you. Let me pull that up, and then we'll work the calendar.
What's in B, by any chance?
Calendar C, not far received the most votes. That's the calendar that we'll look at and that brings the employees back on August the 18th. And you can see the results of the votes. Overwhelmingly, we had 335 of our employees vote for Calendar C, 116 for B, and then 21 votes for Calendar A.
Is there a reason Calendar B was so attractive to the transportation team?
No, I didn't ask, but that's how the numbers came into us. We asked the directors, principals, faculty senate reps to conduct the vote, so.
Well, I would say, I can speak on behalf of Duval, ours would've been unanimous for Calendar C, except that the first pay date for Calendar C is September. The first pay date for Calendar B was the last of August. So the eight people that voted for Calendar B only voted for it because they were worried about having to wait till September to be paid.
That's a good point. I'd made that note here. Most, most of the, the only concerns I have received from any employees regarding the choice for Calendar C is the fact that the first payday will be September the 15th, which is what we always had had in the past, you know, until recently, we started a little earlier, and Birdie and her ladies there defined that it was getting paid on the 30th. But we've looked at it two or three times already, and there's just no way to turn that around any quicker.
Is there any?
I'm sorry, Trish, are you? That bill they passed, it doesn't affect schools?
Yeah, it doesn't affect.
Well, it could affect schools, I guess. I mean, I don't wanna get off on this right now, but is it possible that school systems can pay 24, or, you know, 24 times 12 months a year?
Thank you.
Yes.
That's each county to do that. So it's kind of like prorating it over the whole year. Do most peo-, I know most people probably prorate theirs at some point, don't they already?
Yeah, they do, some are paying.
I mean, you know, one time we had people, I want my 10 months, and, you know, that's all, because I'd do something else in the summer.
Oh, yeah, they can just get it just, I mean, well, they get it in 10 months, but some of them will set some aside to pay.
Well, or they may spend it and work to another job, but there's other money. But the vast majority now prorate it over, you know, where they somehow rather get it over the whole year, right?
And as new employees come in, you know, we kind of give them some guidance on that, that, you know, you're not gonna get a paycheck during summer, you need to put something in the credit union.
As you say, it's permissible, and some counties do pay year-round, to where this particular issue wouldn't be such a hardship.
But now, you know, of course, the thing of it is, that first paycheck is still gonna be September 15th, when you pay year-round, because, you know, it technically would start with the 15th, and then it would run that all the way until August the 30th.
Well, for the first year, but then at some point, you would be getting.
Yeah, it would, the first check of each fiscal year would be September the 15th.
But the last would be August 30th.
The last one, always you need August 30th.
So you'd still get the check every two days.
Right, exactly. And because of what I hear, the biggest complaint probably, is that April, May, or whenever it is, you take all those insurance payments after the summer, that it's a hardship on people. And if we were, and once again, we'll just believe this debate for another day. But if we paid 24 times or over 12 months and equalized that amount with those insurance premiums coming out.
Then we would do insurance once per month.
Yeah, but I mean, we wouldn't be banking on, in those, what is it, April, May, when you take that double or something, that, you know, oftentimes, but we, we'll talk about that later.
Mr. Creasely, can I say one thing, that that is the biggest concern of my staff. They, you know, I think, I think county-wide, it would be a great thing for morale, and Birdie and I've had this conversation, and she's gonna throw things at me probably over here. But, I mean, county-wide, that would be huge to pay our employees 12 months a year and do the insurance, because they continually come to me and say, well, you go to the board and ask this, and I said, you know, I voiced your concerns, you know, and I know it would take some time and change, but, you know, if, I'm sure it would help, you know, not only staff morale, but those people that aren't quite as good a budgeters as others. Because we no longer can prorate, they have to put it in the credit union, and it's now been changed through the credit union, where they send them all of it at the beginning of summer, then they have to budget it through the summer. And I think that's where the problem lies, is they kind of run out of money before the end of summer.
I think that question has come up from other employees, other than at your school, and we would kind of give, would vote against, like, and we think that, you know, we probably have to take a vote from their employees.
Well, we'd want their, their suggestions.
Yeah, see, you know, some, you know, some may wanna do it, some may not.
Well, and you really do that in your office, though?
Uh, it would be hard to do it next year, for, you know, fiscal year 15, but, you know, if we knew we were gonna do that, then we could probably implement it the following year.
What I meant was, Rowdy doesn't want his, he wants his one way, I want mine another way. You have to be a blanket way.
Yes, yes, there's no way we can.
They'd all have to be direct causes. And they all have to be direct causes, there you go.
I think we're throwing in new loops.
Does Canal County do, don't they pay year-round? I'm actually glad to believe that.
Okay, let's go ahead and let Jeff go ahead.
Yeah, we're close. We're right there. Calendar C would bring our employees back on August the 18th. Students' first day would be August the 21st. Would be a full week for Thanksgiving, the week of November 24th, and two full weeks for Christmas break, December 22nd through January 2nd. First semester with this calendar would end on January the 13th. That would be the 90th day of instruction for first semester. And March the 13th would mark the 130th day of instruction, and that's where you'll see the OS days are scheduled in there after that day. But we, we pointed here, I can come around and look at it. We've got one here on the 27th of February. We have one on Good Friday, April the 3rd, which would extend the break for students and teachers for, if, if we don't have to use that day. And unlike the last two years, we decided as a committee to put a couple of those OS days at the very end of the calendar, play in the averages. We don't usually miss more than three or four days of school a year. This has been such an unusual winter, and if we don't use those days, then our students and teachers are gonna be out, their last day would be the day. If we could use those days, then we could extend the school year to the 10th. There's a full week for spring break, the week of April the 6th. Graduation is, it would either have to be May 29th or 30th with this calendar. Graduation is, it would either have to be made 29th or 30th of this calendar.
This is the week after Memorial Day.
Yes, so we're looking, we're looking here at the 29th or 30th, uh, because we've got a full week of school year of five instructional days. And something else that I forgot to point out, there's so much to this. The West Test Window is 25 instructional days, the last 25 instructional days. And that window is fluid, meaning that if we have to extend our school year out here somewhere, that that window will actually slide with the number of days that we move out here.
So different counties could have different West Tests?
Yes. Yes. So as this calendar's designed, April the 29th would actually, next year, if nothing happens, would be our, the beginning of our West Test Window. And it's online, you know, we're experimenting with it this year for the first time.
It's the April 29th, correct?
29th.
Could, could I ask about the, the public hearings? Because this is it, and I guess I'm the public. I know there's another one next week, but, um, what's the public's role? I mean, the teachers had a vote, clearly. It's the board's call at the end of the day, right? But are the public just allowed to comment and give their?
Yes.
Give their piece?
That's right.
Okay, all right.
And they may, this may generate more interest as we narrow it down and, you know, or.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm trying to get a feel of how, even if I report on this next week, it's going to, it's going to miss the meeting. Um, so, you know.
But you're right in that they can come in and say, "We're in favor of this because it does these things," or "We don't like it because we don't like when graduation's going to be," or "Spring break," or whatever it might be.
But has it been, I'm speaking as the foreigner here, has it been your sense historically that the teachers have a good feel for what the parents?
I would say.
You know, as parents, as members of the community, that, that, there, there hasn't.
Them are also.
You know, and I, I, the only, the only concern or complaint that I've ever heard about the calendar was, was when we came back early the past couple of years, I'd, I'd had a couple of local businessmen and women who'd indicated to me that, uh, that there were so many people in this community that was on vacation in July that it hurt their business. And then I had a couple of parents tell me that they struggled trying to get their vacations in, because where they were, they weren't the most senior person, so their opportunity to take a vacation may have been the first week or second week of August. And, and I know this past two years, when we come back early, we've had a couple of instances where we've had teachers who had a vacation and didn't come back immediately that first week of school, and several examples of students whose parents had scheduled vacations the first or second week of August, because that was the only opportunity that they had.
Well, we went, you know, years and years ago, Mr. Wilson calls, as I did, that we couldn't start with the Labor Day.
Right.
So, and we had the same concerns then, you know, "We're interfering," I go to Myrtle Beach this time. And they adapted to that, as they adapted to whatever it might be. You remember that, don't you, Larry?
Yes, I do. Bear with me.
Steve, can I say something? You know, this is a more traditional calendar to what we've been used to in the past. And you have to take into consideration that it could go, if we have another terrible, terrible winter, it could go to the end of June. So not only this late start, not only allows for family time to get their vacations in, also the summer's when we get the schools ready, and we have all these projects going, you know, our custodians. So it also allows them to get the school ready for the next year. We do our payment, you know. Pro, we always have projects in the summer. So, you know, it, it takes into consideration families and assures them that time. If you have an early start and you still have this terrible winter and you go way up in June, that shrinks down the time that families actually have to do their vacation.
As long as they don't jump and schedule their vacation at the end of June.
Right, and that, that's going to have to be communicated.
What, what can go beyond June the 10th there, or whatever? June the 10th, what happens then?
We have, we have to show, that's why you see these out-of-calender days down here, that it is possible, you know, and if we have another.
I mean, do you pay the teachers extra?
No, because what happens.
Good luck there, the last payday through the 10th.
Well, that, and the fact you've already paid them, see, that's another piece of this. Because we're going to pay our teachers no matter, well, you know, as we always do, whether we have school or not.
Right.
So they're going to get their 200 days in, you know, the pay. And we are potentially going to ask them to come back after the fact, that's what we pay them, ask because of key work. Okay.
Well, I think they're going to be surprised at how you get.
They have a contract.
Yeah, you may have to garner your way, and that goes back to what we talked about a while ago. If you were paying them 24, uh, times a year, that would be a moot issue.
Exactly.
But Jeff, now, nine days is the magic number here.
Yeah.
So, and like you say, we've been fortunate, most times we don't have these crazy winters. But if we missed 10th day, show me where, what day would we make up in your mind? Because I know you don't know when it's going to snow this time.
Right, and that'll become part of the policy, you know, that's, that, that we'll have this in writing. But what we would be looking at is spring break.
Okay, so if we missed 10 days next year using this calendar, the first day of spring break would be lost?
It's depending on if you all decide that, it'll be your policy, but that's certainly a possibility.
Well.
But yes, I mean, I, that's, that's how I see it.
Okay, so if we missed 15 days next year, you wouldn't have a spring break?
That's possible.
And these are the things I think we, in the end, whatever we do, we have to communicate. And what I'd like to see us do is, when school, not wait until school starts and send home the calendar to everybody, is send it home when school ends, and say, and, and with some explanation there, uh, that these things aren't guaranteed until it gets back to what it says. There isn't necessarily a spring break there, because I've had people call me, a friend of mine that goes to church with me, they go to Florida. So he called me a week or so ago, "When is my spring break for school be next year?" Because he's bringing the grandkids down there. So I told him and everything when it was, and he was happy. I said, "But wait now." But, uh, anyway, that, so the first nine days were okay, and after that, we would do spring break.
Right, spring break.
Okay, then, do you jump to these other days you mentioned earlier, or do we immediately go to June the 11th or whatever?
So when you're looking at, after your 14th day of, of missed instruction, you're now going to come down here and start making up days, June, beginning June 11th, 12th, 15th.
So if, if, be a regular, Jeff, of the mathematician that you are, we missed 25 days this year, where would we end with that calendar?
How bad it is?
So if, if we had missed 25 days under this guy, right, so we, you know, we would have made up 14 days through spring break.
Okay.
So the next 11 days are going to have to be these days right here. That you see in orange.
June the 26th would be the last day.
Yeah, the 26th would be the last day.
Yes, that's kind of like the worst-case scenario.
Worst case.
Well, I think what Mr. Priestley said is a very good idea, that what we, when we send that home with the parents or put it on our website, we should make a note that spring break will be the first thing that goes.
That's what I'm hoping.
Is that only?
It'll be outlined.
Yeah, is that only if they vote that way?
Right.
Could they elect to take three days of spring break and guarantee two days?
The only risk you run is you don't know what's going to happen after spring break.
Right, and you've got to get those 180 days in.
Right.
But remember, you'll know by spring break how many days you need to make up.
Right.
And weather, but not due to a natural disaster or water.
Yeah, not due to a big flood, that's true.
So there's no certainty, right? I think you have to look at those days first.
You have to take spring break first to guarantee that you're going to have enough days at the end of the year to meet any natural disaster.
There goes my trout fishing trip.
Well, I, we even had some discussion about individuals this year who planned the vacations on spring break, and how that goes.
Yes, they guessed it correctly.
So we not only want to send that home for Ed's and the parent, but also for our teachers.
Yeah, and I want to keep him on a very good point, too. The last two years, you know, we, we really were hurried, rushed, to try to get into those buildings and get them ready for the first day for students, because several of our schools, well, four of them this summer, are going to have summer programs. You know, we're in the high school all summer long, summer school's over there, uh, from June the 30th to July 31st. We're going to have Energy Express at West Hamlin Elementary this summer. The same is true at Hamlin and Midway. So for us to sweep in there and get those buildings ready, now, it, it really puts us in a, in a bind.
And Dana is addressing that, like, he came out and said, "Do you have some projects, some mini projects that we can do during spring break?" And so, we're, you know, looking at that and trying to get some stuff done as we can. Now, there's nothing at Dubal this year, but.
Summertime, you think?
Summertime, right.
Anyway, I feel like I hurried through that. That's what I would call a school calendar on a stick. Do that, scrub down dirty.
I have the other, I think, blank one, Jeff.
Kentucky lost their spring break this year.
And don't they not pay the teachers unless they actually work?
Right.
That's what Kentucky is like, that, you don't work, you don't get paid.
And I saw they only had 170 days of required instructional.
Yes, but now they're 20 hours now.
Are they?
They're 20 hours instead of days. And Heather's moving into the central office next year.
Oh, where is she? That's awesome.
My question would be, do we, the process from this point forward, now, I know we're going to have another public hearing next Tuesday. Do we want to go ahead and include this calendar on there to be approved, or do we want to wait and have that calendar on there on the 15th? April 15th?
Have we, are you going to send home a school messenger?
I, I have, like, I've been talking to other counties.
You're talking about for us to actually vote on it. So the public hearings will be the first and the eighth of April.
And you could potentially approve the calendar on the.
So you said, do we want to vote on it on the eighth, or do we want to wait until 15th?
Right.
But. You don't have a preference?
I mean, I think it's important we send a school messenger home and make sure parents from the county, and make sure all parents know that, you know, we're having another hearing since Sean can't get it in the paper. You know, I didn't expect anybody to be here tonight, because even though people look at this and think it's real easy to do, but there's so many guidelines and, and, you know, that control when you can do certain things, you know.
And you're welcome to come back after you retire.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I love it, I love it.
She loves to build the calendar.
I built 10 this year, and when we had that first hearing, they were like, "Trash this, trash this," you know, and then we all got together, it's my favorite word, tweaked them.
You know, you all probably seen, read in the paper, you know, Wayne County, Campbell County, Canal County, you know, they're looking at early start dates. But I've been talking to some of my colleagues in other counties, like Putnam, uh, Boone, Mason, Logan, Mingo Counties, they're all looking at similar start dates. That's what we're looking at. Either bringing their employees back August 18th, 19th, 20th, in that timeframe somewhere.
And Jeff, one thing we didn't say is that Logan County, we are, we have the same breaks as Logan County, so that our kids are in the heart areas, you know, they don't have a different spring break or a different time than the kids in.
Good point, Karen. We always work with, with Logan County to make sure that we're scheduling our breaks and everything at the same time, because we share those students and teachers in some instances, so.
All right, I have one other question.
Okay.
The waiver that we've requested the last two years for, on Wednesday's. Now, if we do that, are we going to have to use accrued time, bank time to, to that hour of the period?
Well, the way we looked at that, we believe that we will not be able to continue, because we're afraid that we might come up with an issue like we have this year. And if we're going to have two-hour delays due to the weather, we would be jeopardizing, um, the instructional time.
So you're saying by doing it, we might not be able to take up that time?
Exactly.
Right.
So we're not going to request a waiver for these Wednesday's next year?
It's not, it's not our intention.
Okay.
And my staff voted hands down unanimous not to have the Wednesday morning.
There'll be some happy parents out there.
And the parents have been very unhappy with that, in my area.
I guess I hear the question. Any, any other questions?
Okay, do you, does, do you all have any preference on, on whether we vote on this on the eighth or the 14th?
I'll say this, if you want the parents to know sooner so that they can plan for summer, then you want to go ahead and vote.
Well, I, I think waiting on that guidance document's going to be key. I think we can, like, provide some general information. I think we all have a plan in terms of what it's going to look like, but until we get the guidance from the State Department, I don't think we're going to be able to go forward with a policy.
Are you recommending now to vote on the calendar, or the?
No, just to develop the policy.
Or approval, so that's.
Are you saying go ahead and vote on the calendar?
Yes, I think we do, because I, we have to submit it to the State Department for their approval. The deadline is, it's May the 1st is what is indicated in the document that you have, but actually, we have until the end of May, if needed, to submit.
Well, we don't have a preference, I will leave that to Mr. Wilson, whenever you want, which one do you choose?
And then moving forward, now, we've been through this process, uh, I know, we'll, we'll come around to this quicker next year. We'll have these public hearings, try to schedule them earlier. Because I, I think we'll be, you know, we were middle of January before we got any guidance, and, uh.
What, what happens if we have to enforce some of those things next, in the next year? Then maybe if you have the public hearings, then you will have people coming out.
And have a room for that.
And something else that was on my mind is, I was, like, working on the calendar, is, you know, those pitfalls, those times when, you know, that, uh, like, for example, on Calendar A, there's a Monday that people have to come back to work. Well, I know what's going to happen. People will take sick leave then, and then you get into a sub-issue. So you have to look at how the calendar falls and, you know, try not to put yourself in that situation where you're going to have high absenteeism of students and high absenteeism of staff, because that ends up costing the county.
Well, I, I agree with you, and I think you came for working on this, and I'm sure Jeff's.
I appreciate all the work, seeing the other members of that community, you know, the time it's been.
Not easy. A lot of people think they can do one until you actually have to look at all the things you can't do.
It's work.
Not quite as easy.
Read those guidelines.
But once again, really, whenever Chris wants to put it on there, we'll vote on it, but, you know, once again, I just like to emphasize what we do, whether we put it on school messenger, or send it home, or put it on websites, where, that we make it, you know, crystal clear that, you know, we're entering a new age now with this 180-day requirement. We don't have any leeway anymore, we have to do it, and, and these breaks could be jeopardized. We could be going to school way up in June, just so they'll know it in the back of their mind. I, I say that because, you know, when I go to Myrtle Beach, this is my parent and me, uh, but if you go down there and you're there in the summer, "Well, I want to get my reservation for next year." Well, at least in the back of my mind, you know, I may not alter what I do, but I, I have to think about that. Okay, thanks, Jeff.